A little bit until they're in the air.
All right, I believe we are live at six o'clock. I'd like to call us to order. In accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws nineteen eighty-five, section thirty dash four dash eighty dash E, the following have been notified of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting. The Herald, the Charlotte Observer, CN two, and WRHI. If I could, please ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It is very exciting to be back. At first, it felt like a really short summer, and then today it felt like fall, so maybe it should be back in school. And it's Gray's first official, I'm sorry, it's Mr. Young's first official meeting in the big chair. Yes. All right, you all have received a copy of the agenda. Were there any adjustments or corrections?
Amanda.
Then that will stand with unanimous consent.
Wait, wait.
There was.
A typo.
In section two of the June twenty-fourth minutes.
Oh, that's minutes.
That's minutes, not the agenda.
Agenda, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm going there next. Okay.
All right, well, I got that.
So the agenda is approved with unanimous consent. And our next item is approval of minutes, starting with June third. Are we good on the third?
Yes.
Okay. And then June twenty-fourth?
Section two, at the very end of that, there's a run on, I mean, hanging sentence. It wasn't, it's like something's missing.
After the county's reassessment.
But I don't know what it is.
I'm trying to figure where you are. Right above three.
Yeah.
Oh, after the counties.
The millage will be applied after the rollback of millage due to reassessment of the county's what? I'm looking at Leanne.
Um, like the final assessed values are received.
Of the counties.
Assessed values are received.
Yes.
So can I get a motion to approve the minutes with that correction as stated?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, with that adjustment, the minutes from those two meetings are approved. I have one card for public participation, so Mr. Langford, if you want to come on up, you have up to five minutes to address the board. The time is yours. You'll start with your name and address.
Perfect. Before I start, I'd like to hand out some materials.
Okay.
That's okay.
Yep, come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah. Very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, sir. One more. All right, appreciate that. So my name is Brennan Langford. I live at four, six, nine Halts Creeks, Halts Creek Parkway. I'd like for the minutes to show that I just handed you a SILFAB stop work order as well as a affidavit, whistleblower affidavit related to a unlawful termination. Good evening. I stand before the board and new superintendent, Young, to urge you to stand with parents in opposition of York County's unlawful attempts to backdoor the spot rezoning of an imminent threat to our children and teachers. Over the past fifteen months, SILFAB has spent millions of dollars upfitting a warehouse into a chemical manufacturing center. Tonight, I'm here to share with you that SILFAB is conducting operations is no longer a hypothetical or a future tense reality. On June twenty-third, a surprise inspection found employees performing non-construction work in an unsafe manner, which is illegal. Means of egress were blocked, exiting lighting, fire alarm, or sprinkler systems were not operational. Large fuel tanks, generators, and air compressors were on-site and operational. This prompted a short-lived stop-work order of construction. This surprise visit was prompted by a whistleblower complaint who has now brought a wrongful termination suit after he was allegedly fired for bringing these concerns to management. In that suit, there is an affidavit that states, and I quote, "The company has had employees work inside the plant for months, and when announced visits for inspections occur, SILFAB management asked us to leave and work from home in order that the plant facilities be made to look unoccupied with nobody actively working inside. This has happened to me personally. I have been asked suddenly to stop work and leave the plant when inspectors were shortly to arrive. I have also observed chemicals on site and operation of production lines where despite SILFAB having no operational permit, the company has put together temporary machinery to chemically manufacture solar cells and solar panel prototypes in a clean room that spans the length of the warehouse. I am aware that SILFAB is renting generators and chillers from Sunbelt Rentals for limited operations, which should not be happening. With respect, I ask this board, what more do you need to know? This is how your new neighbor, SILFAB Solar, conducts its business. SILFAB, a company that isn't even operational yet, makes it standard practice to break the law, covering up their violations for inspectors, disregards neighbor's safety concerns, and then fires employees when they bring up safety concerns. Parents are thankful that Citadel EHS has offered to help in their capacities. However, what Citadel offers via air quality monitoring is simply not enough. We know that from both Emory and USC that residual risks of a catastrophic accident related to combustion events, given the weekly transport and transfer of silane, or chemical leaks, given the possibility of an acid scrubber malfunction. We look forward to hearing from Citadel, particularly what level of access or additional information was provided by SILFAB to provide the community comfort in their methods and processes. The fact remains that Fort Mill School District should not bear the cost of all of these reactive safety measures that Citadel may propose when parents have been demanding a proactive response from the district. Listen to what Citadel is telling you. Read between the lines. They wouldn't be here if there wasn't a substantial risk to our children and teachers. Mr. Young, I was just in a meeting with you recently where you laid out your four commitments, one of which was the commitment to collaboration on solutions. How will you show us that you are different from your predecessor and stand alongside parents and tell York County enough is enough? Back in November, I asked this board and Dr. Epps to seek safety in the law against York County and to stop this madness. On November twenty-first, I received a duly signed letter from Dr. Epps and Chairwoman Spears declining my proposal. It's time to revisit that conversation. Let's not be victims of our circumstances. Let's take bold legal action, not simply measure how toxic our areas in our classrooms and on our ballfields. SILFAB cannot be permitted to operate in the backyard of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have got several staff reports, and we'll start off with Ms. Lordo with the financial update.
Okay, thank you. In your packet, I included the monthly financials to catch us up for May as well as June. But I'm going to go ahead and just discuss where we stand right now and what we're working on with June, because obviously May rolls forward into June. And June is our final month of the fiscal year. It's also the month where, if you compare expenditures from May to June, just wanted to remind you that we have processed two of our teacher payrolls because we issue our final twelfth teacher checks in July, but they accrue back to June. So our teachers are on an August to July payroll, so I'd just like to remind you of that as well. But looking at June thirtieth, you can see that I did note this as preliminary because we are right in the middle of reconciling all of our year-end numbers. We're still pending some final tax reconciliation information from York County that we'll post. We have already recorded your approved year-end transfer of the three point six million that you approved at the June third meeting. So that has come out of these numbers. But if you look in summary, total revenues right now are two hundred forty-three million, seven hundred fifty-five thousand, and expenditures are two hundred forty-three million, nine hundred twenty-eight thousand. That's about as close to a break-even as we could expect. So what I think will happen now is I think we will be favorable with the final tax reconciliation. We generally have been because being the largest school district in the county with the county-wide millage, we usually pick up a little bit of revenue on that final calculation. We also have some June interest income to be posted. And as we go through all of our special revenue funds, there could be some adjustments back and forth and some things that we look at. But I think we will probably still be on target to end our fiscal year at about one point four million going into the fund balance, which will keep us in that eighteen to nineteen percent. But I think as far as for our taxpayers, that's about as close as we can get to a break-even in looking at how well did we do with what you approved in the tax millage for twenty-four, twenty-five. We did not have any significant real estate tax collections in June, but vehicle tax collections were two million, three hundred fifty thousand. So we're consistently seeing that at a higher level now with our monthly vehicle tax collections. And we plan that in the budget plan for twenty-five, twenty-six. But once again, these are preliminary numbers, and I will update these for you as we go forward. We are in the middle of our audit. Our external audit firm, Green Finne Colley, has been working on our interim and started their year-end audit process, and they will come back around mid-September once we finalize all of our final numbers to complete our year-end audit. But any questions about June? Or I'll move on. Oh, Mr. Bolden?
I have a couple of comments.
Okay, sure.
Things that we have talked about before, but just to point out for public consumption more than anything. Page two here is showing year-to-date numbers and looking at the fancy little graphs we got here. Couple things to note. One, local revenue fifty-six point five percent and state revenue thirty-six point three percent, which is pretty much a hundred and eighty-degree flip-flop from what it was, what, two years ago?
Yes.
A year ago?
Three.
Three, yeah, three years ago, okay. So there, that's one thing. Also, this little red dot, federal revenue, that a lot of people like to put this on at times. I don't even see it on the graph.
That, that little dot on the federal revenue of about two hundred fifty thousand is the funding for the junior ROTC programs at our three high schools. All other federal revenue, and this is by the state coding regulations, not our choice to show it this way, but all other federal revenues such as Title I and IDEA.
Restricted funds.
Are restricted funds in a separate fund and not part of these general fund numbers. But for some reason, the state puts the junior ROTC funding in the general fund. So that's our little red dot for federal, federal funds.
Yeah, I just found it interesting.
Any other questions? Okay, well, I'll keep going. Impact fees. We have collected to date eighty million dollars, eighty million, five hundred seventy-six thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars as of close of business yesterday. We've also earned seven point three million in interest. So that gives us a little over eighty-seven million. Of that eighty-seven million, we have claimed eighty-one point four, eighty-one million, four hundred thousand to York County to date, primarily for Flint Hill Elementary School, but about fifteen million towards Flint Hill Middle School. So we are keeping up and we are claiming it rather quickly when the collections are received to minimize the debt issuance on Flint Hill Middle School. That's what we're monitoring very closely now.
How much has been dedicated to the elementary school?
About sixty-eight million.
Thanks.
So going forward, now that I assume we'll pretty much stop pulling anything for the elementary at this point.
We have a little bit left in pending commitments on construction pay apps that we are in the process of completing. But we pull that out, and primarily, all new collections will go towards the middle school.
What's the frequency that you'll, that you'll do pulls like that?
As far as looking at our debt situation.
Well, I just didn't know, how, how often do we want to take that money? Because I don't know when the next debt issuance would occur.
We are looking at it month to month with where we are on construction costs.
Okay.
In fact, we just had one today. We decided to go ahead and cover it out, the bond issue versus submitting it, just to make sure we're covered with the elementary school first. But we will watch it every couple of weeks when we are paying pay apps now, especially large pay apps on the middle school, and make that call, are we going to submit it based on what's come in in collections for impact fees? Or are we going to go ahead and pull the bond issue proceeds to pay those pay apps? So it's almost on a payout-by-payout basis at this point to be, we're going to be extremely careful on the, the bond issues going forward towards the middle school. And I think I've shared with you, we will probably issue more smaller amounts of bond issues than we ever have before because of this reason. We will not issue large amounts as we go through this construction program for the middle school for that reason.
So that we don't have to end up issuing any more than we.
Correct, absolutely, yes.
So essentially, the, the elementary school is done. Could you, just, what does that mean on how much we save? Do you, do you actually have that number on how much we would have saved?
We ran that at one point, and, and it was somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to ten mills due to the fact that we paid cash.
And a value of a meal, a value of a mill on debt.
Debt is about twice what it is on operations. So it's about six hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
On debt right now.
And so for a taxpayer on their home, that equates to?
About, I would, I'm rounding, probably thirty to fifty dollars a year.
Per two hundred and fifty thousand dollar value of the home.
Yes, per hundred thousand.
Per hundred, per mill.
So, and our average price point on homes is six hundred.
Six hundred, yes.
It's just nice to hear, instead of, this will only add, this will only equate to this much more month. It's nice to hear, like, we're actually going to deduct.
And I, I can pull those more exact and send that to you, so you have it for talking points when you get questioned on it. Let me look those up and send you the exact numbers on that.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, I'm glad to do that. So just to date, now with single-family units that have been permitted, we're at two thousand nine hundred and thirty-three, and multifamily townhomes, we're at two thousand one hundred eighty-one. So we've now collected on five thousand one hundred fourteen permits that have been issued since July of two thousand eighteen. That includes the old impact fee and the, the new amount that was just passed. So June and July combined, we had twenty-nine homes that were permitted. We did not have any multifamily during the summer. But our June collections were a million, thirty-nine thousand. You probably saw that on the monthly reports, a million, thirty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty dollars. That was over the average last year. The average last year was slightly over eight hundred thousand. So June was over the average. July was a little bit under, but it was still six hundred and fifty-two thousand for July. So combined, over the summer, we collected about one point six million in impact fees.
I'd like to comment there, too, that the number of units seems low relative to what you see out on the road. But I, I would imagine it's because people bought up, paid early within anticipation of the increase, of the fee increasing. So there were a lot of permits open out there beforehand.
There were a lot of permits issued end of April, May, and I think for that reason is what we saw.
The good news to that is it does have a window before it expires, and they have to give back, reapply, and it comes back at the new number.
Correct.
And there's a lot getting ready to explode again. So, I know, right?
Okay. I mentioned about the financial audit. We have recently, Green Finne Colley has completed our procurement audit. They were here on-site. That's where, that is separate than the financial audit, and it is a deeper review of all of our procurement practices. They sample transactions across all the schools. They have issued the draft report. We have had our exit conference, and we will submit the report to you. But I'll share with you that the results were very favorable. We were very pleased. There are only two comments, and I don't think we will ever get rid of the two comments. One is that we have cards issued in the school name versus an individual person. So each principal has a card, the assistant principals have a card in their name, but we have one or two cards just in the school name that teachers can check out if they need to purchase something. The State Department Procurement Office does not like the fact that we have cards in the school name. So that is one thing they have asked outside auditors to review and report on. But we respond to that, and we just share our policies and procedures, and we explain that we feel like we have very tight controls on that. And we like it better than a teacher checking out a card that might be in a principal's name. We think we have a better control of that. So that's one comment. I'm not sure we'll ever get rid of that. The second comment is we had some cards that did not have any activity in over six months. And we said, well, we don't really consider that a problem. We don't want people just to go out and use the card so it has activity. But that was one, another one of the things that the State Procurement Office asked the external auditors to check for. So we have written a response to that. So those were our two comments. So we were extremely pleased because you know how many individual transactions we have across the whole fiscal year, and that was what they, they found and reported on. So they'll send the report to us. We'll submit it for your review as well. But I just wanted to share that. And then the last thing is, I always like to remind you that the state budget projections are always changing. I don't have any more updates, but just to remind you that we will get an update after charter schools are in session for five days. They go back and look at the actual charter school enrollments, and they update that statewide formula after the charter schools have been in five days. They also update for bus driver salary supplemental funding. We haven't gotten that yet. It's about six hundred thousand. And then they'll update for health insurance. So if you happen to look on the state website, you can go under the State Finance Department, and you'll see all the different versions of the state budget, and that's what I watch. So I'm kind of watching when the next, the next version comes out of the state budget. So I'd just like to share that to keep you updated on that.
Do the charter schools operate on the same calendar?
I think they may have different day, they probably have different start dates. So, you know, there's two, two entities now since the one closed. So it's whenever those two have reached their fifth day, and then the state will redo the calculation based on their current enrollments.
Citadel picked up, not Citadel EHS.
Yes, they did. You're right. So we have three.
Charter schools.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. I don't know, I missed on, I missed that as well. All right, so we don't really know when that.
We don't know. I just like to remind everyone that those are, even though we say we've gotten the state final budget numbers, it still changes throughout the year. Okay.
Anything else for Leanne on this topic?
Okay, thank you.
You have the next one, too.
Oh, yes. Okay, the next topic.
A new policy change.
The new, the policy change. So there was a change in the state law last year related to parent support groups. That's booster clubs, PTOs, PTAs, any of those organizations. So it actually, the wording changed in the twenty-twenty-four legislative session. We did not update our policy last year. And also, we did not request this information. The deadline is, is, they say August first. Last year, it was in September when I gathered the information for our annual booster club training. So this year, we're trying to do it a little earlier. And we have requested that from our schools, and we've heard from all of our schools, but I think like three or four. And, and they're just waiting to get, we have to get all the officers' information, their emails and things like that. So we're just finalizing that. But the wording in the new law, there were, there were two key things that it did. There was a lot of discussion about it, but the final version had the wording that said each booster club within a school district must annually register with the school board of trustees. So I feel like I'm asking them to register with me, my office, on your behalf. It doesn't say you have to formally approve. So I feel like I will just share the list with you once we receive it from all the schools. And it says no later than August first, which is very early for school districts.
Yeah, it is. And a lot of the change that occurs, they don't have their new officership.
Exactly. But we are working to be a hundred percent in compliance on this. The other piece, and this is the one that there was a lot of discussion during the legislative session. It says upon receipt of this information that you may request a criminal background check on the treasures of these organizations.
So have to, we may?
It says you may. Now, initially, the wording at the state level said required.
Okay, that's what.
And there was a lot of discussion as the bill went through the House and Senate on this. But the final version says may request. So we obtained the, the recommended model wording from the School Boards Association, as we always do for your policies. And that's what I've included in your packet. The school boards wording kept will require a real request, a background check. The wording that I sent you for consideration, I went back and said we may because I'm not sure we have to do that for all of these organizations that we have. I feel like this gives us the ability, if for some reason we feel like it's necessary to do that in any given year or for any certain groups, we have some concerns, this policy would give us the ability to authorize us to do that. But if we put will, then we're going to have to do it for everyone every year. So that, that is the only change that does not conform a hundred percent with the School Boards Association wording. So their wording update to this policy, it's policy KBE relations with parent organizations. They incorporated all the new language of the law about the annual registration by August first, and they incorporated the paragraph about the background checks.
Aside from the expense associated with a background screening, why would we not go ahead and do that?
We can, if, if you all feel like you would like to do that.
So this, this is only, tell me the position this is only for.
Treasure.
Treasure.
Is it a volunteer position?
Yes.
And it's where the most amount of fraud happens in a, in an organization such as a volunteer group.
So, so for a parent to go on a field trip, don't they have to get background checked?
Background checked.
It's, it's a different level of check.
Okay.
This is a deeper.
This is a financial background check in addition to just a, you've got a misdemeanor or a felony against you. Or, I don't know, I punched my neighbor or some craziness.
It's a different level.
Right.
If you would like to, I mean, we can certainly, that's what this first reading is for, is. If you would like to, I mean, we can certainly, that's what this first reading is for, is to get your feedback. And if you would like for us to do, that's probably, I mean, each school, especially at middle and high school, they have more than one organization.
Right.
Parent support organizations, so we are probably somewhere between forty, fifty.
But you train those treasurers or you have a training for that treasurers?
And we are planning to have that again. We usually do it around the last week of September, first week of October to give them a chance to get started, kind of see what their questions are. We talk about best practices. We have one of the partners with our audit firm come in, so it's an independent person talking about best practices. And because our audit firm audits so many school districts across the state, um, they do a great job of giving them examples of some things they've seen and some things not to do.
So could we not just have the treasurer of each organization sign a piece of paper that says whatever it is in the policy, I have not been convicted or pled guilty or no load contendra to a felony, blah, 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 blah.
We could do that.
And then, like, we're taking their word for it, but if something should come up, now we've got, then we would run the sled and say, I'm sorry, not only did you missle, but you lied. But I think for the most part, volunteers are doing this not because it's fun or, or I, I mean, I like to err on that they have good intentions, not terrible ones. I mean, I get it, money's gone missing.
And I think, I get it, Michelle.
I'm sorry for your hyperventilating.
As we talk about a policy, I think it makes sense to say may because that gives us the flexibility, right?
Right.
From a policy wording standpoint, I think some additional conversation about what level of checking we want to do in practice is worthwhile. And is it, is it an attestation? Is it a background check? Is it the more simplistic background check like we do on, on volunteers? You know, what, what level of, of validation are, would we be looking for? I think that's worth some additional conversation.
My only concern would be that optically speaking and, and in practice then, we are actively picking and choosing which organizations we're going to check or not check because we feel comfortable with Pleasant Knoll Elementary, but, but Pleasant Knoll Middle, we're gonna.
We would, I, I don't, I can't ima, I don't think it would be appropriate to do it on a case by case basis. I'm just saying we, we will either choose to do something, whatever that something is, we would do I, I think to all forty or fifty, right? We wouldn't just choose one school and not another.
But that's what you, I, I think, Michelle, if I understand, that's what you open up when you say may.
Right.
But you're meaning collectively?
Collectively, you know, that, that as a district, we, we may choose to do these things, but we would not choose them.
All the time.
Individually for different schools and different organizations. I mean, either we're gonna do it or we're not gonna do it.
And I was thinking more if, if the principal came to me or the president of the organization came to me and said, I have some concerns. I may say, I think let's do this. I can only remember twice um during my time here that we have had an issue.
And in either of those cases, I mean, I was just what was in the Fort Mill Times back then. I mean, those people had not been criminal.
There was no record.
Correct, correct. And, and in both of those cases, it came to light because someone.
Saw something.
Saw something and didn't feel good about a situation and brought it to our attention.
But a policy of background checks on everybody wouldn't have prevented.
Correct. I don't think so.
No, it's just another, you know, it, it's kind of like having security cameras at the entrance of your neighborhood. It's a deterrent.
Right.
Doesn't mean that they're not stealing the catalytic converters, they're still coming in and doing it.
Right, but it only deters if they've done it before. Like they wouldn't sign up to be treasurer.
I mean, think about kids ding dong ditching, they may or may not ding dong ditch if you've got the cam at your, at your front door.
I mean, I, I'm just like, once they cleared the background check, then they, they're in.
So let, what, now that we've heard some of your concerns um and your thoughts, let us talk about this a little more. If you'll think about it and let me know in the next two weeks before you do the next reading. And then we'll kind of go from there.
It's a, it's a threshold level becau, you know, a hundred thousand dollar threshold because all of our PTAs, PTOs and booster clubs far surpassed that threshold.
I would not recommend that we set a threshold.
So Leanne, why, why, why do you, why do you feel that, that that would be the appropriate language?
Well, I, my initial thought was I did not feel like um for all of the treasures that we've have every year that, as, as you mentioned, they're volunteering, they're giving their time. Um, they are generally, um, I don't have any concerns about them. I don't know that we need to say to every one of them, we are gonna background check you every year.
So this is an annual thing?
This is an annual thing.
And in some cases, the treasurer job, I don't know exactly how it works in, on paper, but in practice is distributed. There's different parts of the role, right? So it's be, because somebody, you know, one person is officially keeping the books, but there's multiple parts to the treasurer as well. And so I don't know how that's, you know, you wouldn't have all those people. You'd only have the one whose name was in the box with the, with the registration.
If you're the one that signs the checks, you're not the one doing the bank rec.
But I don't know which one of those people is called the treasurer.
Right.
Right? Cause there's a lot of officers at a lot of clubs that have abilities to sign checks. It's not just the treasurer.
Correct. And in some of the smaller groups, I think they don't have enough to truly segregate their duties that way. I think they might have one person doing all that. Some of them require dual signatures on checks, some do not.
Right.
Um, some have a much more sophisticated um quick books, let's say, accounting.
And some don't.
Record keeping, some don't.
And, and we don't mandate any of that because those are limited in organizations.
They are independent, they are not under our control. They're, they're completely fiscally independent of us. So that was my thinking initially is to go with the may wording that I feel like gives us the ability if we come across a situation and we feel like it's necessary or, or someone has concerns that they share with us. Um, but it does, if we have it in our policy that says we will do this, then we will have to do it every year for every single one.
Yeah, this is definitely something to think on. Uh, just with may, I think right now, you're probably right. Like we've got amazing people in these positions who wouldn't. But if that policy stays in place ten, fifteen years, well, those people won't be there anymore. Uh, so some, something to, to, you know, but, but anytime you say may, that opens up the door for someone to say they're, they're not being treated equally, which is just not gonna be a good, a good thing to go, a good path to go down. Uh, so if it was more, if we did have a blanket policy, no one's, everyone's getting treated the same. Uh, but every year, I'm just, e- every year is a little excessive.
So, so think about it and, and like I say, please reach out to me, send me an email, call me, let me know kind of your thoughts after you, you think about this a little bit and we'll, um, as administration, we'll have some more discussion about it as well.
And I guess for curiosity, since we've got them working so diligently on our other things, perhaps ask Green, Vinnie?
We can, sure. And I can ask them, or they, and I can also ask, um, we, well, this will be after your second reading. We have our first OEC Finance Group meeting on September fifth. Um, but I can reach out to that collective group of our area school districts um and see how many of them are actually doing the background checks every year. Or are they going more the option of they may do that?
Right.
Is there a specific time element to, we need to?
I was supposed to say, do we have to do the second reading until after that?
You could postpone it um since we didn't edit our policy last year. Um, I feel like certainly you could wait.
It started apart, it was due August first as far as the collection and all that.
Correct.
Yes.
Um, so if you'll give me a little bit of time and I'll share that with you, what I'm finding out from some other districts. I may reach out to some of my other friends statewide, some of the larger districts and see what they're doing, like in the Columbia-Greenville area as well. So I can share that with you all. Okay, thank you.
All right, um, you are officially off the hot seat and now we've got a so, summer program update with Dr. Strzoggs and Amber Smith. Oh, Amber's coming up.
I get to start. We'll go in order, elementary through high school. I haven't seen you since June, so I wanted to take a chance. I haven't seen all of you um in person, but in June you guys raised the millage, which got me an additional ESOL teacher, so thank you. Um, we staff, fully staffed all thirty-three, so I wanted to make sure that I said thanks for that while I had a microphone in my hand. Um, one way we support students is through those additional instructional supports and other ways through our summer program. So Space Camp, uh, this is our fifth year, our fifth anniversary of Space Camp. Um, I went back and, and revisited, you know, where the idea of Space Camp came from and why we worked on it. Um, we've worked and the additional programs that we, nope, wrong way. There we go, that we support through Space Camp. We've provided many of these programs for a really long time. Um, but what we have been able to do by combining them all under the larger umbrella of Space Camp is that we're able to use our local, state and federal funds in a way that provides more support for students. Prior to having Space Camp, these programs could have run separately. Um, they, in some cases ran at different locations, which meant different bus routes, different student services, um, different student nutrition offerings. So more programs, more stuff, you know, it's, it's like running separate schools. And so by putting them all under the umbrella of Space Camp, um, it provided us a way to, to use those funds um more efficiently. And I think in um the time we are in right now, we've had a lot of conversations about federal funds and when we have concerns about those, these are the kinds of programs that can be impacted with that. So I thought that was helpful just to communicate that we're able to do this because we are able to combine those funds um in, in, in that way. What it also does um is it allows us to, much like space, expand and contract as funding um is available or not. Uh, so this year we were able to add a Title I program that served uh students that were at the three Title I elementary schools for the targeted grade levels for those particular schools. Summer reading camp, ESOL, Lunch and Learn have been around for quite some time. You're pretty familiar with those. Um, but we ran Space Camp in the month of June. Um, there were about two hundred and twenty students across all four programs um and we had about forty staff members. When, let's see. Um, we ran it at Pleasant Knoll Elementary, so we appreciate the Panthers for being our host once again this year. Um, we couldn't do this program without the support of the amazing leadership team. Uh, Jessica Mercury is with us today. Um, she was our program administrator and she was also the support for that Odyssey program since it was a small one. I kind of think about the program administrators kind of like the principal of this two hundred and twenty person school. And then Jacob Johnson, who is also with us tonight, ran our Voyager program, which is ESOL. Justin Tebow ran our summer reading camp under Mercury is our mission for that. And then James Whitlock um is, was back with Lunch and Learn with Apollo. So um what's nice is as we expand and contract, we just add missions or remove them as it makes sense. And it keeps that brand consistent for parents. Space Camp becomes a thing that they're very accustomed to and then depending on how their students get served. We have some students that could potentially qualify for every single thing on that board. Um, so it allows us to be able to put them in the, in the program that is most appropriate for them without having to recommunicate with parents because they already know they're coming to Space Camp. Um, I'd also like to mention specifically with this leadership team, this is year five um and Jessica is my fourth program administrator. You might say that's bad. Uh, that's a lot of turnover, right? Um, I will say that the four folks that I have had in that program administrator role since starting Space Camp, one of them left to be a principal in another state. Um, and the other three are current assistant principals at our elementary schools right now. So we have Kay DeWalt, who is at Fort Mill Elementary. We have Rashad Brown, who opened Flint Hill this year. And then Jessica Mercury has opened, uh, is working with Dobie's Bridge this year. So it's a good problem to have. Um, and I appreciate you guys continuing to support this program because this reinforces for me that this is an opportunity for leadership. And so we're growing our own. We get to hang out with them in the summer and then they yank them right out. Uh, and I gotta go find another one. So anybody want a job this summer? I have an opening for program administrator, but for me, it's been a real gift to be able to work with these folks and then to continue to see them grow is awesome. All right, so I have to report to you on Read to Succeed. So um when we look at Read to Succeed, this was the first year of summer reading camp implementation under the new Read to Succeed law. So it went into effect last summer, but they didn't hold us accountable for those summer program components until this summer. Um, so our summer reading camp enrolled fifty-four students across eight classes. Last year we were able to provide other grade levels. This year was third grade only. With the new law, in conjunction with new ELA standards, also meant a new ELA test. And then we had new criteria for how you qualified for camp on a test we hadn't given before with standards that we had just taught for the first time. So we got out our crystal ball um for each of the schools and tried to predict who might be there. And I will say we overshot it a lot and I'm okay with that. Um, but we didn't know what to expect. And so we were trying to predict who might be the students that have um the potential for landing on that does not meet category for SE Ready. So some of the students that are on that list did not need to be there. Nine of those students did need to be there and that's what you see in the next one. Um, so there were nine students that did not meet a good cause exemption and we'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. Um, nine students of the fifty-four needed to be there. The other fifty-four were kids that we may have predicted needed to be there. They may have met a good cause exemption, but they still came anyways because mom and dad wanted them to be there. Um, there are all kinds of things that could have happened. There are kids on that fifty-four list that did not show if it does not meet. They did a great job. They did approaches, meets. I don't think we had any exceeds, but I'd be really happy if that happened too. Um, so we have a variety of students. Now that we've been through this one year, I think our crystal ball might be a little more calibrated and we'll see how we do for this time. Um, of the nine students that needed to attend to meet a good cause exemption for the summer reading camp component, seven of them didn't met the criteria, which is pretty fantastic. Um, that meant two then fell into that required retention. That is part of the summer reading camp law. The Read to Succeed law says if students fall into the, into the does not meet category um and they do not meet a good cause exemption, then the expectation is that they are retained um in third grade so that they have another opportunity to meet the um required expectations for literacy. There is an option to do um a superintendent promotion. So with the two students that were um not meeting any of the good cause require, or good cause exemption potential, the principals at each of the, those student schools did what we are considering an academic review. This is a new process for us. We've never actually had kids that got to this stage. Um, so we put this process in place to meet the requirements of the updated version of the law. And so we looked back at all of the things that qualify for a good cause exemption and then we added in a layer of um the Light's retention scale, which is a standardized way to look at students to see if retention, they're a good candidate for retention or not. So we did that for those students based on that information. One principal recommended that the student be promoted to fourth grade and Mr. Young approved that. And one student was retained in accordance to the law. So that's how that landed. Um, of the students that actually fell into the does not meet category. So remember, this is a change from years past. If we think about our four categories, does not meet is the lowest performing and then we've got approaches, um, meets and exceeds. It used to be summer reading camp and, and the Read to Succeed law was activated for students in that does not meet category, but only the bottom portion of it. We called it not bet one. So we took all the kids that underperformed and then we took a subset of those. Now we take that whole category. And for that whole category this year, there were seventy students in that category for third grade. Of those seventy students, eight of them met the first good cause exemption was that they're a multilingual learner newcomer, meaning they've had fewer than two years of US school. So they are not required to be um retained. Fifty-one of them were identified as having a reading disability, had IEP goals or five oh four um supports that were related to reading specifically. Seven of those students, what we talked about on the slide before, were able to meet uh what they call um successful completion of summer reading camp, which is, it's not that you just came and you spent your time in summer reading camp, but you have to meet that star score that would be equivalent to um the m- meeting category on SE Ready. So seven of those students did that. There were six students that met good cause exemption number four, which is meeting that star score, but they were able to do it before the end of the school year. So the, really the only difference between three and four is timing. Did you do it during the school year, before the end of the school year? It has to be in the spring or did you do it in the summer? But the star score is the same either way. And then we had five students, uh, or excuse me, good cause exemption five had no students in that category. And then we also had the two students that we talked about just a moment ago. Now, if you are playing along at home and you add those numbers together, they don't equal seventy. I didn't do my math wrong, I promise. Um, one, the two kids are not counted in there. And then also some students qualify for more than one good cause exemption and so they're counted in multiple categories. So, um, that's all the legal jargon that you need to tell you. What you really want to see are the cute kids, so let's do that.
And cute pictures.
Yes, I have a whole YouTube channel dedicated to the next 20 minutes of my presentation. No, I'm really excited that I'm not the last thing before the superintendent update. There's somebody behind me. I never get that experience, but I'm still going to be short and sweet. Looking at the middle schools, our summer camp additions are some staples you've seen for a number of years. Middle School Math Camp has existed for a number of years. It's traditionally been targeted just towards Algebra I, but it's expanded over the last, obviously had a big change because they're not going to Algebra I this year. They're going to Geometry. So there's a whole change on the math, but it's also for all really seventh and eighth grade students that are accelerated to that Honors GT level. So it's an opportunity for them to plug in, practice their skills, and have a smoother transition to those classes because it's their first time. They didn't come up necessarily starting in the sixth grade with the sixth grade honors math. So as a seventh grader and an eighth grader, this is going to help them have that perfect slide into the position. We had 16 students across four middle schools that took part in that math camp. Also, we have traditional summer school. Summer school for students failing one or more subjects. They can go to summer school and work on their core classes there. The numbers are down in summer school in terms of how many middle schoolers we had participate, 16. That's not a lot. That's probably half or less than half of what we've traditionally had. But I do think our grading practices, reassessment, things of that nature, giving students an extra opportunity to demonstrate what they've learned have reduced those numbers in general. Of the 16, all 16 passed and are moving on to the next grade level with that. And then we have our transition camps. All the middle schools have some way of preparing students for that next step into middle school. They welcome their middle schoolers with different programs. I've cited just a few, soaring to the knoll path to the trail, swarming into sixth, I love all the names of them. But you have also WEB, where everyone belongs, traditional camps that really bridge the gap with some mentoring and helping those fifth graders become sixth graders with these, learning everything from locker combination to just cultural expectations in sixth grade. At the high school level, it's, we have our, I'm going to skip to the bottom of the slide just for a second. Our traditional high school credit recovery programs, numbers seem to be relatively down there. We had 16 students at Catawba Ridge, 17 at Fort Mill, and 27 at Nation Ford who were able to earn back an English, math, social studies, or science credit. And of all those students, all of them were able to earn a credit. So no one failed in the credit recovery program. But I want to highlight Nation Ford for a minute. Nation Ford is the recipient of our Title IV funds. Those are federal funds aimed at closing an achievement gap specifically through supports in safe and healthy schools, well-rounded education, and technology. If we have more than $30,000 in that pot, we have to give like 20% to each one of those subgroups. We were just under the threshold this year with about $27,000, so we got to use it any way we wanted, which was really flexible for Nation Ford. This is their first year receiving these funds. With all the influx of Title I funds, and we're able to really support the previous recipient, Springfield Middle School with a plethora of supports, we're able to follow that same student group as they went to high school. So it's high school's first time receiving it, and boy, did they get to work. This summer, Mr. Chandler, Christy Cruft were able to spend $27,000 really fast. They put on an AP Human Geography Camp. It's our first experience for ninth graders working at the college level, so it is a camp to prepare them for these skills. It was bridging the gap not to high school, but really to college for these students. Likewise, with geometry being the focus of the math for everybody, middle and high schools, that first step in our math progression now, they laid the groundwork with a math camp. So geometry with statistics camp to really make sure we had our students that were identified as maybe needing the most academic support, had support in preparing for math. And then Link Crew, which is similar in nature, if you're not super familiar with the program, sort of like a high school version of WEB, where they're doing mentorship and transition model to help students culture to the expectations of the school. All three of those camps were funded with federal Title IV funds, and they had glowing feedback as to how that went. You can see some of the photos of the students there. But that's, you'll have to go to my YouTube channel for all the videos. Questions about anything middle or high school?
Can I add something? You know, we've talked a lot over the last few years about adding AP courses, dual credit courses, higher level courses. So when you see something like the AP Human Geo Camp and the Middle School Math Camp, we know we have to provide extra support for our students to meet the challenge. We don't want to just throw harder work and harder classes at students, but making sure we are offering harder classes and more rigorous classes, but then also giving them the tools they need to be successful in those courses. So those are two examples of our efforts there.
And we have, now that the funds are unfrozen from the federal government, looks like we're going to have double the amount of Title IV funds. So I see a great expansion in terms of the offerings that Nation Ford is able to add, and we may even spread the love a little bit if they're all stocked up.
So specific for Nation Ford again, or?
As of right now, yes ma'am. Our historic pattern has been to follow that subgroup of students based off of SES.
Question, qualification for summer school, is that they are recommended for it and then they volunteer to go to it? So how does that, how do you come up with that 16?
For the, talking about the middle school specifically?
Yes.
So middle school, it's going to be based off a failure of a core content. They're required, if they fail two core content, it is recommended if they fail one. And then taking summer school and passing summer school technically isn't failing. So for instance, if you failed the same course multiple years, it's also a requirement. But if you go to summer school, it's not a compelling factor. I know that's a confusing statement, but meaning if I failed it in the seventh grade, went to summer school, I would not have failed, even if I failed it in the eighth grade, it wouldn't be two consecutive years because I passed it by going to summer school in the seventh grade. But there are rules on that, helping the students be identified as it's recommended or required based off of how many courses they have failed.
I'm just curious, elementary through high school, how is our attendance at these summer school type events? Because I think that's where the partnership aspect really comes in, because parents have to help us wake them up and spend their summer, or part of their summer, back at school. I mean, I know we provide transportation, but I'm just, like, are they there every day? Or, I mean, obviously, if they're going to Neptune and Saturn, but you know.
I'll let Amber address the elementary, and I can jump into the middle and high after that.
So we do track attendance like we do during the school year, so they keep it in Power School. That's part of it. Because we have the leadership folks in place, they're able to reach out to families. Our roster always start, like this year, for example, started probably closer to 250. They don't all show up on the first day. A lot of them do, some things change. They were the ones directly impact, like, I would say by and large, most students come most days. And we do have some folks, for Summer Reading Camp, for example, because it's contingent upon state testing, and most families in our area by the end, last week in May, have already made some summer plans. So it's really difficult. We did have a scenario where a kid had already, they'd paid for camp, and that kid was one of the nine. And so we had conversations with family and made a decision, he's one of the seven that made it. So I said, send a book to camp with him, we'll see what we can do. It worked. But those are the kinds of things that we do have scenarios, but we try to make it, class size is small enough so that teachers are then able to, in the summer, reach out. If a kid shows up on day one and isn't there on day two or three, they can reach out, communicate with families. We do have some kids that show up on day one, and then we never see them again. Space Camp didn't live up to their dreams. I get it. But we do transportation, all of those kinds of things, and try to make it work. So I would say most come most of the time.
I'm really glad you asked about transportation. It's not directly related to the credit recovery in summer school, but one of the greatest things about the Title IV camps for Nation Ford High School was transportation was provided for these camps. That's such a huge encumbrance of the budget that it's really awesome to have participation in these because we can say your transportation dependence is not a challenge for participating. At middle and high school, it's a little bit different. They do report the attendance back to the home schools in terms of how many days they miss. In previous years, we've said, if you miss more than one absence, you would not pass the summer school at the middle school level, so there's a lot of attendance. And then high school, it's sort of a module-based completion, so the faster the students work through, so they want to be there. As soon as they can, they can be done with summer school when they have successfully completed all their required modules. So they try and get there early, knock it out. Some of them will even work on it at home or over the weekend to just be done.
You know, I'll brag a little bit on Pleasant Knoll Middle. So my daughter starts, she's going into, she's going into sixth grade, so very nervous, you know? And so they had the soaring to the knoll, right? She got to go to that. And I just can't speak highly enough about the student leadership at that school. Like, they just welcomed in men, made it super fun, and so she was way more excited to go. Like, dropping her off the first day, she's a little nervous. Second day, she was like rushing to get out of the car for the camp, like, is very, very excited. So can't speak highly enough. How long have we been doing those?
I was going to say, we've been doing web programs since probably about nine to 10 years, because it was about the time that my daughter was in sixth grade was one of the first or second years that they did it.
It's probably been about, I know at Springfield Middle, it was probably 2011, maybe.
Okay.
It was earlier than that, because I moved here in '07. No, you're right, about 10 or 11, because Michael participated in that as a sixth grader.
Yeah, it was really good. I can also sing the praises of Space Camp. I think we were in year one. It was at Riverview. And, yeah, it really, it was tremendous help for my son. And I do remember, the transportation was tough, because he's got four, well, at that time, he had three sisters. And so it's like you had to navigate that, but that was just our scenario. Getting him up was, getting him up was a challenge. I do remember that. It was like day three, he was like, Dad, I don't think this is actually Space Camp. But yeah, it was a big help for him.
All right, well, thank you very much. Now, we're going to invite an update from, I'm not sure if Joe's going to kick it off or Julie's just going to come up on her own, but as was mentioned earlier, we've got Citadel doing some work with us. We're going to get an update.
Yes, and before I turn it over to Julie, just wanted to again introduce her. Julie Wojcicki from Citadel EHS is going to be with us tonight. They're going to be talking about some additional things they've completed. We've been up here before, talking about the initial signup of Citadel EHS coming on. One of the main things I wanted to remind everybody of is that the presentation that she's going to do tonight, along with the recording of this board meeting and other documents, we will continue to add to our Facebook page. So if you're watching this later and want to go in and take a look at things, you'll be able to do that. We have a page on our district website where we will continue to update. We recently put some other information up there about air quality testing, and of course, everything she's going to share tonight will be posted up as well. So having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Julie. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for having me again. I think I've had an opportunity to engage with almost every one of you on the board. I want to first and foremost thank you all for engaging with us to do this important work. The more I sit through these board meetings, the prouder I am and the more privileged I feel to be able to do this work with you all and in this community. I will dive right in. For folks that didn't hear the, our original presentation, I just wanted to give a little bit of an overview of who we are, who Citadel is. We are a environmental health safety firm. We have over 30 years of experience in the environmental health safety space. We're known nationally for our scientific integrity, regulatory expertise, and commitment to community-centered solutions. Our team includes certified industrial hygienists, toxicologists, engineers, and safety professionals, all whom have experience navigating complex public health environments, including schools. We are also FEMA and GSA certified, which means we meet the highest standards for emergency response, planning, and security in public settings. And importantly, we carry $10 million in professional and pollution liability insurance, and that provides protection for this work. Our work often takes place in scenarios similar to this, where schools, communities, and industry exist side by side. These are often, as we are all feeling, high interest, high security setting, where concerns and public health, environmental risk, and transparency intersect. We help communities navigate these situations through objective analysis, honest communication, and practical, science-based solutions. Our role is not just to be technical, it's also about building trust and helping communities move forward with clarity and confidence. Ooh, I'm not moving my slides, sorry guys. Here we go. All right, so why are we here? We were brought in to provide an independent assessment of environmental conditions at the Flint Hill Elementary and Middle School campuses, both in terms of air quality and emergency readiness. We're here to listen, as I mentioned, understand concerns, and provide honest answers. Our mission here is to facilitate safer environments for this community and that all stakeholders, students, staff, family, and local partners are informed and equipped. Ultimately, we're here to foster trust through clear communication, responsiveness, and an unwavering focus on student health and safety. I reviewed these key terms and definitions the last time I was presenting, so I'll just go into them again because they'll be referred to throughout the presentation. When we refer to indoor air quality, I say it's affectionately called IAQ. We, what that means is that it is the air inside and around a school and how it impacts comfort and health. HVAC systems is another, HVAC is another term you'll hear. And HVAC systems play a central role in maintaining clean air by filtering it and circulating it throughout the building. You'll also hear us talk about VOCs or TVOCs. What that means is volatile organic compounds or total volatile organic compounds. And these are gases from things like building materials, chemical products, cleaning products, or industrial processes. or industrial processes. And then finally, particulate matter, you'll see it referred to as PM, PM 2.5 or PM 10, and this refers to microscopic particles in the air that can be inhaled and potentially impact respiratory health. These are the primary environmental elements we'll be talking about today. So our initial scope of work was to review documentation for both Sylfab and Fort Mill School Districts. We've completed that work in addition to two sidewalks of the Sylfab Solar facility. One of those sidewalks included members of the Fort Mill Leader, Fort Mill School District Leadership Team and Sylfab Solar Leadership Team. We assessed things like the Sylfab's air quality permits, the wastewater permit emissions modeling, chemical and gas inventories, and emergency response protocols, there are lots more. We reviewed the health risk assessment that USC did, among other publicly available documents. And then we dove deep into the district, the documents that the district provided to us. So that ranged from extensive emergency operations plans to a list of all of the cleaning products and chemicals that they use, their very in-depth HVAC and mechanical plans, information about their air filters that'll be in the HVAC, information about chemicals that they've done research on. That EOP, Emergency Operations Plan spans the gamut of emergencies. I will say that it was extremely robust and gave us a great foundation. We then developed an action plan, and this consisted of an air quality monitoring plan and emergency preparedness and safety recommendations. I'll dive into those a little bit later. So now that we developed the air quality monitoring plan and that safety and emergency response recommendations, we're taking all of that into, we're going to do that as a next step, but we've also looked at the well health safety rating and identified all of the points, the maximum amount of points that the Fort Mill School Districts, specifically for Flint Hill Elementary School, can achieve for that well health safety rating. That well health safety rating is a policy-based certification program that's reviewed by third party, a third-party certifying body. And it essentially pulls together all of the Fort Mill School District's policies, ranging from those HVAC plans, those cleaning products I mentioned, emergency operations plans, benefits, mental health programs, and so on. And a third-party company will review all of those documents and then award the health safety rating. We, as part of all of this, engaged with a lot of stakeholders. I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone that welcomed me with open arms. I've had numerous meetings with members of the Fort Mill School District Leadership Team, meetings and phone calls with York County Emergency Management, meetings and calls with Sylfab Solar and their PR representative. And I think more importantly, I had a tremendous opportunity to hear from about 20 members, 20 parents and family members from Fort Mill. I answered a multitude of questions that were presented to me, and I just feel very privileged to have been welcomed by them and to hear their concerns because they are valid. So now let's move on to how we're going to implement this plan. So the forthcoming scope is essentially scheduled air quality testing for in, in the building and outside of the building. And right now, this is for Flint Hill Elementary School. This helps to assess the air quality that is circulating in the school and then immediately outside of the school. So some of the parameters we'll be monitoring and where we'll be taking those samples from, I'll talk about in a bit. Then we'll, we've recommended continuous outdoor air perimeter monitoring, so this is two continuous air quality monitors that will be placed along the fence line on the school's property to monitor the ambient outdoor air quality all of the time. We will be monitoring this and we will be managing the data, and I'll talk a little bit about why we're doing that and what the purpose of that is in a minute. As it relates to emergency protocol development and drills, we want to create aligned and collaborative emergency response plans. I'll talk about that in a little bit, but my main goal there is to ensure that the Fort Mill School District has emergency operation plans that align with Sylfab Solar's emergency operation plan, local OEM plans, and the county emergency operation plans. And then there are a number of environmental enhancements, which I'll talk about in a little bit, those are related to the health safety rating but pertinent to this as well, and then more community engagement and training. So let's dive into the air quality monitoring plan. So this I'm calling scheduled indoor and outdoor air quality monitoring, it's the first box on the left. What this means is that we'll be, and we actually have conducted the first round of this testing, we'll be in Flint Hill Elementary over the period of three days. We'll set up multiple sets of equipment in various areas in the school, and they will run for 24, between 12 and 24 hours. That gives us a representative sample of what the air quality is like inside and directly outside of the building. Then that continuous outdoor air quality monitoring, as I mentioned, will be along the fence line, and then some of the key contaminants. This is not all of them, but this is the most important ones. These were identified from the list of chemicals and gases that will be used at Sylfab Solar at some point. And that list is, again, this is not the full extensive list, but hydrochloric acid, hydrogen fluoride, volatile organic compounds, and total volatile organic compounds, as I mentioned, ammonia, particulate matter 2.5 and 10, formaldehyde, and saline. And then the sampling schedule for this, what I'm calling scheduled indoor and outdoor air quality monitoring, is to conduct the first baseline study, which we did about two weeks ago. We're waiting on the results from that baseline study, it takes between, anywhere between two and 25 days to get those results back because we send the samples to a laboratory, and they analyze them over a period of time, and then they tell us what those results were based on or in comparison to industry standards. And I'll talk a little bit about what those industry standards are in just a bit. So we'll do that, what we're calling preoccupancy testing, which we've already done, we'll do post-occupancy testing about a month or so after students have been in the, students and teachers have been in the building and all the normal activities of classes and gym and so on and so forth are happening. And then we'll do additional monitoring after Sylfab starts up operations and after their next increments of operational milestones. So the idea is that we would be capturing, testing, capturing those levels at a baseline and then be able to compare future instances related to Sylfab Solar's operation and ramp up of further operations. Before I move on, I have a little why it matters on the bottom here. And I mentioned it provides real-time data to help us ensure that the air around the schools and in the schools are in alignment with the EPA's National Ambient Air Quality Standards. And this will allow us to interpret that data and then act quickly if there are any changes in conditions in the future. Sorry, I'm a little off here. Clicker's opposite. Sorry. Thanks, Joe. There you go. All right. All right, so I've pretty much covered this, this is essentially talking about the schedule for the testing. I've also included a note here about why we would do it for every instance, so for the baseline testing, it's to understand the initial air quality in the brand-new building. And then the second round of testing is to assess quality while classrooms, air quality while classrooms are full and the building is in regular use. And then testing after Sylfab Solar begins operations is to determine if there's any external industrial activity that may impact air quality around the schools and in the school. And then the ongoing testing would be every three months or after Sylfab operations ramp up, and that is to monitor any changes in that air quality. So we'll have, the goal is over time to have a very robust database of air quality testing results for us to be able to paint a picture of what's happening with those results as the building operates as normal and as Sylfab ramps up their operations. Continuous outdoor air quality monitoring, I mentioned, we'll deploy those two outdoor air monitors, the same contaminants that I mentioned earlier, in addition to wind speed and wind direction. This is important for outdoor air quality testing because wind speed and humidity and things like that often have an impact on which way the particles flow. And so this is important. Those stations will be equipped with weather stations, and our team will be monitoring that data on a regular basis. And then the data from that testing will inform operational decisions and policies and practices for the school district. The goal is to enable proactive adjustments to the school's HVAC system and any emergency protocols or activities onsite should there be any concerning air quality spikes in air quality that are not wanted or ideal. So this is the, the next piece, it's emergency operational protocol alignment. As I mentioned, I've met with York County EMS, I have met with Sylfab, I spent probably over 20 to 30 hours reviewing their emergency management plan, gas protocols, chemical protocols, and regulatory emergency protocols related to chemical and safety, or chemical and gas leaks. So we are deep into permits and deep into industry regulations and standards, that's what this whole plan was based on. And the goal is, as I mentioned earlier, then to create one unified plan for emergency preparedness. And eventually, we'll have drills, Sylfab Solar noted in their emergency operations plan or their EAP plan that they have, they plan for drills on a regular basis. We're recommending that there be drills across, that include the county, Fort Mill School District, and Sylfab Solar, so that we can see that aligned emergency management plan and emergency operations plan in action and make sure that there's as little error during that as possible and that people understand, people and companies understand their roles and responsibility should an emergency take place. Given all of that, it will be that alignment in programs and drills and policies will be formalized in a publicly available memorandum of understanding, or MOU. That is a way for transparency around these policies and procedures. All parties have agreed to contribute to and be involved in this MOU, and our goal with this recommendation is to garner and facilitate more trust across the community and unification. And then there will continue to be education and training, we'll create some educational materials to ensure district staff and families understand the roles and actions and communication pathways during, should emergency, emergencies present. And then environmental operations, these are related to the health safety rating. I am very glad that the school district has prioritized putting some of these additional things in place. So based on the air quality testing results, we may or may not recommend standalone air filtration units for specific rooms. We'll look at those results, we'll compare them over time, and it is just a added measure of air quality control to put standalone carbon and HEPA filters that would be in these specific rooms. And then we'll be conducting water quality testing on an annual basis, so we'll do that during the post-occupancy visit, that's coming up in a few weeks. And that is to ensure that the drinking water in the building is safe. I know that there was some concern from community members around wastewater treatment and how that could or could not, or how that may impact drinking water, and so we'll be testing that water to ensure that it meets rigorous requirements, and if it doesn't, we'll make recommendations for how to combat that or mitigate that. This is a, the developing comprehensive management plans for mold, moisture, and Legionella is one, is one group of policies and procedures that many companies do not even include, and it is one of these policies that helps to prevent mold and moisture from growing in the building, but then also to ensure that the students aren't impacted by any mold and moisture that could grow in certain places. So we'll be developing mold and moisture Legionella management plans in collaboration with the school district's facilities and operations teams. And then one of the things that was mentioned in the, the, the letter from the pediatric, I can't remember the full name of it.
Yeah, P-E-H-S.
P, yes, thank you, was to conduct noise monitoring if exterior noise intrusion or sound from construction or development or industrial nearby were to be an issue or if there were some complaints. And so we are prepared to conduct that testing should it become a problem. And stakeholder engagement, I have talked about this at length. The school district has agreed to hosting more community events to discuss safety plans and to share air quality monitoring results and gather further feedback from all stakeholders. We'll develop family communication resources, as I mentioned, more staff training, and provide additional education to staff and families on all of the work that we're doing. As Joe mentioned, when he introduced me, will, all of this information will be publicly available on the Facebook, the district's Facebook page and on the website, and that's all to ensure transparent and inclusive communication, to build trust and ensure that staff and family members are prepared. Overall, our goal is to preserve health, to safeguard the well-being of every student stat, and staff member, to build out those emergency preparedness plans, to foster more transparency, and empower personnel. Thank you all. That was a lot of me talking, but I'm sure you all have questions. Can I take any?
It's a lot of digestion. I have some.
Go for it.
Okay.
I have some. So first off, I'll talk, I'll, I'll talk about, I'll brag on the school a little bit here, it's phenomenal. Like, it, the, the right leadership, the right staff, I mean, this, this is a good, this is a good thing. My, my kids, my kids are excited about it, they love it. So, 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 so I got to be part of that tour, right, the other day, and it was, honestly, it was, it was a lot of, it was massive, place is huge. A lot of it was, I, I expected, I did expect to be very impressed with the, with the level of, you know, with the level of security they had, with, with, with the, with the heightiness of, of, of everything. And so I, I got walked around and I saw where everything's going and stuff like that, and, and, and I was And, and, and I was walking back and, and, and I, and I, I gotta say, you've done a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Like, that, that right there, that's what we hired you to do, right? Like, that's, that's what we hired you to do. That, and that's, you, I think you've met that with flying colors.
Thank you.
So when I was leaving, and I'm, I'm, I'm walking out, finally when I got out of there, I had to, I had to ask myself, like, what is, what is it that, you know, there's a lot of frustration around? And when it comes down to it, the frustration is around the zoning, right? Which has nothing to do with you, got nothing to do with this board, zoning. And so it, it even doesn't have anything, anything to do with SILFAB, right? SILFAB's the client. So SILFAB applied to be there, and they were told they could be there. I almost look at it as, like, so, so I'm a loan officer, and, and people entrust me with giving me, if, if, if I receive your info and, and if I get, if I get, if I say, hey, I need all these documents to make sure that this is good for you, it's my responsibility to make sure that that's a go, that, that deal is good to go forward. If we, so I think about someone buying a home and, and they get to near the end, and then something comes up that totally prohibits that deal from, and it's a deal breaker.
Mm-hmm.
It's a deal breaker. It, it, it blows the whole thing up, right? And I have really done a disservice to, to, to my client at that point right there. And, and so I was walking out, and I said, Joe, I was like, I don't, I'm not a professional at this, I don't, I don't, this is not what I specialize in, but if I was given a survey, walking out, not knowing anything, and if I was given two options, and if I was to see that one option was, do you feel like the facility you just, you just walked around and, and, and toured is light industrial or is heavy industrial, which one do you feel like it's gonna be? I mean, all day long, I'm gonna check heavy industrial when I, when I see it, but that was just my personal opinion. And so, so I said to myself, well, let me, let me back that up a little bit. And so it, it didn't take very long for me to, I, I get the frustration because it didn't take very long for me to look at the zoning code and see the qualifications for heavy or light. I mean, this isn't an Amazon distribution center, right? And when you get into the level of chemicals, I mean, you're nailing it. Everything that you're doing is perfect, but when I just, when I reconcile it to zoning code, this thing just does not add up to be light industrial. So it does make sense of, of the frustration that people see, and so it, it's a York, it's a York County, I mean, it's a York County issue. It, it really is, and, and I, I truly, I truly hope they, they look, they, they, they look at this, it's not SILFAB's fault. They were given information that I feel just was, wasn't, I, I feel like York County let them down on this. But, but it's an impressive facility. I think they have done everything you can to hit all safety measures, but I don't think that's the issue at this point. I think, is it, is it allowed to be there? And based, based on just a simple search of York County zoning, and you know that they're dealing in these, in these quantities, I think that's the, I think that's the real thing you gotta look at there. But you, you keep doing what you're doing there, but I, yeah, that, 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 that was, that was my takeaway.
Thank you, Joe.
Let, let me take that a step further. Again, not, not our place to decide light or heavy, to your point, you, you, you know, you read what it says and it was decided one way, it was decided another way. Light or heavy aside, I think the reason, though, that it's concerning to a lot of people is because of the concern of what's happening there. Whether it was classified incorrectly or correctly, the, the concern, I think, is what activities are happening in that location that could have an impact on our school.
Right.
Right? Because to your point, we, we don't decide zoning.
Right.
And so I feel very good that we're taking the, a proactive approach in thinking through, given what is happening there, zoning aside, what could go wrong? What, what should we be concerned about? And I think that's where the two-pronged approach of the, the ongoing air quality, water quality, are our kids drinking stuff that's okay, or are they breathing stuff that's okay? I think that's obviously very important. And then the, the second prong being the accidents happen, right? What do we need to be prepared for? And so I think that's, that's the piece that we'll still need more discussion and more visibility to, and, you know, and we don't share everything.
Right.
Right? About, about evacuation plans and, and on all of those things. So it's, it's finding that balance of making sure that we've considered all the things that could go wrong and what kind of reaction response would be needed under X, Y, and Z scenarios, and, and how much of that we make visible. But I feel good that you guys are working with the SILFAB information so that we know what to factor into those, into those planning.
Yeah, thank you for all of that, I appreciate it. I will also say that my first goal was to listen and to hear all the respective parties' perspectives and concerns and feedback because there was a lot being said in a lot of silos. And so I think just hearing everyone and being a neutral third party, which is hard, especially when, when, you know, children are at stake and, you know, I live in a, in the community very close to the school and, and SILFAB. But just hearing all of the concerns and then being able to bring the parties together, I think, is a monumental step for this community. And Joe, you know, and others that were on that tour, I'm so glad that we were able to make that happen. One of the things that I mentioned a few times when we were on that tour, and I've mentioned in various conversations, is there is a very large gap of knowledge. You have, you know, engineers at SILFAB Solar that are modeling which way the air is gonna flow on any given day, and they're modeling how much of the particulate is going to come, be filtered out every day, every minute. And they have these very sophisticated processes in place for, you know, treating the air and treating the water, pre-treating the water, sending it back. And that is an extremely technical level of information. I don't pretend to know enough about physics or chemistry. I thought maybe I needed to go to space camp or algebra or geometry summer school, but they're deep into that all day, every day. And myself, as an environmental person, professional, I al, I can only scratch the surface of what their engineers are able to model. And then, you know, we have children that don't understand, there's a big gap there. There are, you know, community members that have an understanding somewhere in the middle, some of them may have an expertise closer to that, but their, SILFAB Solar is modeling and, and creating projections that there is a huge information and knowledge gap about. And when there is that knowledge base, that knowledge gap, regardless of how big or small it is, it creates fear. And so talking to each other and being able to be a third party amidst all of this to translate some of that science and translate some of that math, translate how that happens in real life, the wind blows and the particles flow that way, the water goes in and this gets filtered out, is important. And I can't, you know, really thank you all enough and tell you how much I appreciate as a community member that you've prioritized this. I've also let the county know when I was at the Rock Hill wastewater permit meeting. This is what my team and my colleagues are doing at Citadel in collaboration with all the various parties, is an example of what needs to be remembered for future economic development. I have given that feedback to the county. They have done it to a certain extent, but I hope that the work that we've done and the plan that we've put together creates a more formalized pathway and expectations for what should happen because, I've said this before, Fort Mill is a wonderful community to live in. And when you have a great place to live and you have kind and caring people that live here, that prioritize their children and their health, more people want to move here. That's why I moved here. So the more, the better the community is, the better the people are, the better the schools are, the more people want to move here. We're seeing that, we're seeing the numbers increase in droves. We can expect that and should expect that to continue to happen, but we should also remember what's happened here and advocate for a lot of this partnership to happen earlier on. And I think that, as you mentioned, Joe, sits first and foremost with the county.
Yeah. And just, just to add one thing, you know, I'm, I'm a parent who has, has, I have two kids there, and, and I, I, I also had my kids here whenever we opened the schools back up for COVID. It's young children, very protective, you know? Elementary parents are very protective, as they should be. And elementary parents just hit different on, yeah, yeah, like I said, it's.
By the time they're older, you don't worry about it.
As they should. But I'll never, I'll never forget my son, who already had COVID at this point, I was dropping him off, and he got out of the car and he forgot his mask. And he got, I was driving away, and he got three, four steps up, ran back, jumped inside my moving car, and he was freaking out. He was freaking out because he was so convinced that he was gonna kill somebody. And that is what was, and so I, I had to really, I had to watch myself. How was I, how was I acting? You know, and, and so I, I say that to, just to tell the parents, like, I've, I've seen kids, you know, and that was a boom of anxiety in our schools, that, you know, a lot of those kids were just scared to come to school. And we, and we saw that, man, like, you see how many, like, more interventionists we have? And it all reconciles, a ton of it can be credited to, to that. It was a lot, it was, it was a very scary moment for a lot of people. And so I don't wanna see those kids, specifically at these two schools, have that a, as, as a result. I think this whole thing needs to play out. You know, there's a lot, there's a lot of things going on. I just don't wanna see the kids go through, go through that, and I've, and I've seen some. And I know, I, I know there's a whole lot of concern, and this might not even come out professional, but I just want, I, I just want, I don't want that to happen to these kids.
Me neither.
So to, to, to the parents, I just want you to have those conversations with your, with your spouse, with yourself, just try not to.
Exacerbate it. I've talked a little bit about why I felt called to support with this, but ultimately I, I heard Joe say that children would be in Flint Hill Elementary Schools, or Elementary and Middle School. And I knew that I couldn't control the zoning, I knew that I couldn't control what SILFAB did or what the county did, but I knew that my company and myself had the opportunity to influence what happens. I think somebody told me recently in Zoro, they talk about the controls or spheres of influence and concern, and I was, I was taught to think about what I'm concerned about, what I can influence, and what is just a concern. And so I took my concern and I pushed it towards influence because my company said we're behind you.
Right.
And we have the expertise. And so, you know, we're influencing everything in the right direction, we have the cooperation of all the stakeholders, and I know that the community, students, and teachers are all listening and watching very closely. I take that to heart, I take it extremely seriously, and I'm not gonna say that everything will go 100% right or everything will be perfect, but it will be an effort that included feedback from the most important people.
So I have a question for you.
Go for it.
So for acute clarity, could you share with the public or reiterate what, what your role is in this?
Could you repeat that last part?
What your role is in, in this, this.
How do you fit in?
Yes.
Oh, how, how do I fit in personally with the project or with this work? Well, I, I think I know what you're getting at, but correct me if I'm in the wrong direction. I live at 495 Forest Way Drive, which is about an 18-minute walk to the SILFAB Solar facility and about a 13-minute walk to Flint Hill Elementary. When I take my walks during the day, I can see the elementary school at one end of the block, and I can see the middle school at the other end of the block, and I can see the SILFAB Solar facility just beyond the middle school. So first, I'm a community member and I'm a resident of Fort Mill. I'm not a parent at the moment, but hopefully one day my husband will, husband and I will foster or adopt, foster and adopt. So my children will be going to, my future children, God willing, will be going to that school. So I'm a resident, I'm a community member, but I'm also an environmental health, safety professional. I was a nurse for the better part of 15 years for a large healthcare organization in southeastern Wisconsin. I practiced inpatient for seven years on an oncology unit, and then I floated across pretty much every specialty you can imagine, meaning I went to every single practice and supported physicians in pediatrics, in family practice, in orthopedics, in neurosurgery, in neurology, dermatology, pulmonology, you name it. And I became a merger and acquisition specialist in that role, which meant that all of the small private practices and specialties that Aurora Healthcare was buying, I helped bring all of those companies onboard into their EMS. So I was training doctors and nurses and administrative staff. After I finished that work, I had a quarter-ish life career change, and I followed in my father's footsteps. He was a building engineer by trade. When I was little, I was the child that he would take down to the commercial office buildings, the high-rises, and he would have me help change the air qua, the air filters in big, huge HVAC systems. I would help clean up if there were flut, leaks or floods. So I knew my way around the facilities of commercial office buildings fairly well. And I followed in his footsteps and started my own sustainability firm. And so my role, my practice focuses on indoor air quality testing and industry standard certifications and benchmarks for indoor office or indoor building environments. What that means is we're taking field data, we're using instruments, and we're testing air quality, sound, water, light, temperature, things like that, and we're comparing those tests and those results to industry standards. Things like ASHRAE, which is the American Society for Heating Ventilation and Air Conditioning Engineers, things like the EPA in terms of volatiles or toxins in the air, water quality parameters, we're measuring things like lead and mercury in water, and coliforms, turbidity, things that can float into your water. So I have, you know, I have almost 20 years of experience with direct health and as a nurse educator, but then also as an environmental health, safety professional. The rest of my firm, we have an environmental engineering and sciences department, call them the below-ground team, so they're actually drilling into the ground and analyzing the soil to see what types of contaminants or particulates are in that soil. They test water in wells, they remove wells, things like that. And then we have an industrial hygiene and safety department with a number of certified industrial hygienists, certified safety professionals, an environmental compliance department who's looking at the permits, and so that's my role.
Gotcha. So, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So will there ever be a time where you may invite some of those other subject matter experts to join you here?
Absolutely. Yes, and some of them were here two weeks ago to conduct the air quality testing.
Okay.
And our CEO. And our CEO will also be making a trip here in the fall, and he would love to meet with some folks too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to the next update as things progress. We'll get you back here and bring in some others as well. Superintendent Young, we have now reached the point in the agenda where you get to do your first superintendent update.
My time to shine. All right.
Because apparently school's back in session.
School is back in session. So I want, I want to start off by talking about, a little bit about the crossing guards and the traffic guard situation that, that we're currently in right now as a district. This was something that was kind of sprung on us last minute. We had our third-party vendor told us that they could no longer offer traffic guards, which are guards in the road. And I want to be clear that we still have crossing guards at marked crosswalks, except for two right now. Nation Ford and Orchard Park. We're still working on proper signage for those areas. But they basically told us they cannot staff the, the crossing guards or the traffic. But they told us that they could not.
Well, that they would not.
They would not offer traffic guards any longer. So we, as soon as we heard, we met quickly with the city of Tegu K, the town of Fort Mill, to review all of our options. With advice from both municipalities, we looked at a lot of different options, but short-term was really looking at the no-left turn as, as the, as the main option for, for moving forward. Obviously, there was a lot of feedback from the community on that. And we got some local legislators involved. And the town and the city agreed to staff traffic guards, uniformed police officers at those main intersections, which was Catawba Ridge, both student and car entrance and exit, and then Riverview Elementary, River Trail Elementary, and then the Fort Mill Elementary, Fort Mill Middle. So it's a two-week trial, basically, that, that they're doing. They're able to offer them for two weeks. I don't know, keep hitting the button, I guess. But we are, in this two weeks, we are looking at long-term solutions. So we are still in talks with the town of Fort Mill and city of Tegu K. And I want to thank them for their support and also thank our local legislators that really stepped up to, to help as we move forward with this. So for the most part, it's gone well. I, I know there's been some traffic backups. I've heard of some traffic backups at certain places, but we're gonna continue to look for long-term solutions as we move forward on that.
You mentioned two municipalities, but we actually have two schools that are in the county.
Correct. And they've been involved too, I should have said. Yeah, York County as well.
Our two municipalities would not take, have any connection to those two schools.
Correct. Flint Hill and Orchard Park are the, and the county's been great about the signage for Orchard Park, for that cross, that marked crosswalk.
And I remember back in the day when we opened Pleasant Knoll, and Scott, you might remember this as well. We didn't have left turns out of Pleasant Knoll Elementary, ever, that, until, I don't know, I was there several years later. And I was like, whoa, wait a minute. When did we start making left turns out of here? Because we just did not allow that.
Started out right turn only?
Yeah.
Interesting. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they did.
And, and I think you said this, and I know some, somebody said it in, in some of the discussions, but it, it really is their strong advice that it cuts down on, on accidents. It causes a backup in some places, and we're, we, we know that and trying to figure out, figure that out. But they still stand behind the fact that it, left turns cause more accidents and right turns prevent a great number of those. But it's inconvenient, for sure.
I think NHTSA, the National Transportation Safety Association, has done studies on that and has proven that time and again.
So that's where we are, and we'll keep you updated on all that. So now to the fun part, opening of school report. I want to start last week, teacher week. Teachers came back last Monday. Our team went out to all, or, or most of our team were able to come and, and go to most of them. We went to all 21 schools plus Oak Grove Academy last week, met with each faculty and staff for about five to 10 minutes. Very short, but welcomed them. I told them my commitments as the, as the new superintendent. Talked about the four Cs, culture, community engagement, commitment and continuous improvement. And it was awesome to see the, the energy of our, our faculty and staff as they returned last Monday. So kids came back yesterday. Awesome. Arrival was smooth. It was efficient. There were smiles on everybody's faces that, all the schools that I went to, I did not see any tear. I did see tears today, but this is the second day of school, so. But he, he, he ended up going in, but car rider, car rider lines moved pretty quickly for the first day. Buses were arriving on time for the most part. The staff enthusiastic. We had volunteers that were, were ready to help and greeting, directing students. We had new traffic patterns, as I, as I just talked about, so I'm sure that caused a little bit of a disruption, but for the most part, it went well. Again, the staff was working already very hard, building the relationships with the kids. And that's the, my favorite thing to watch is, is, is they talk to the kids as they're coming in. There were schools that introduced their core values and their behavioral expectations. Dobie Bridge, Dobie's Bridge did the wings, or the fire, not wings, they're dragons, I forgot. They did fire expectations. Fort Mill Elementary did wings. And then Springfield did cult values, and some of us got to see them talking about those cult values as we visited them. And then some of them were in, introducing their positive reinforcement systems. River Trail has the Otter Tickets, and Lippi, you're gonna like this one, Flint Hill has the Cub Cash. Kindergarten students started on a staggered start, so it was interesting to walk in some of those classrooms. Have like four or five kids. Those kindergarten teachers were loving life. But helps them acclimate to the small setting, yeah. And I got, my nephew is a kindergartner, so I got to go see him today, so he was behaving. And then also, our cosmetology program opened up at Catawba Ridge, and it has been a huge success. We had the grand opening last week, so it's awesome. I might go sit in the massage chair when I'm stressed out.
That's right.
We had visitors, district office staff, and we had school board members, did a little different routine this year, and I think it went well. Got to, to all the schools, which was awesome. And I had a lot of schools talked about their appreciation of everybody that visited. So growth opportunities were still dismissal was, was the, probably the most challenging part, our principal said. Had some late buses, had some last-minute changes in transportation, especially at the elementary level, that gets tricky. And then you had some kids that might have got on the wrong bus, so. But we figured it out. Everybody got home safely. We got them there, we got them fed, and we got them home that first day, so that was good. And then Flint Hill Elementary, our newest school, had a phenomenal first day. We were able to, some of us were able to be there for, right when it opened, right when they opened the doors. And 774 students, the energy was unbelievable. It was just so exciting. Had pom-poms, music, lots of TV cameras and crews were there, so it was, it was great. And they launched the Cub Cash Positive Reinforcement, and Michelle said it was an awesome, awesome day, so. It was exciting to see. So any questions about the first day?
I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Okay.
I would.
Absolutely.
So it was obvious I was with principals over the last couple of days. So Dr. Dixon and Ms. Huestead, it's obvious that they were back in their zone, and it was wonderful watching this and watching the buildings. I'll tell you, my takeaway was, so Ms. Romanek sent me a photo yesterday of her and my daughter. And she was assistant principal over at Fort Mill Elementary. And it was a reminder of the impact that every single one of you in this room play in our youngsters. You get to mold them. What's fascinating to me is, is that if a child's in the district from kindergarten to 12th grade, you all get to see them throughout this journey, and it is one of the most liberating things that I've experienced. At our dinner table, we talk about Ms. Young, we talk about Mr. Griffin, we talk about Ms. Romanek, we talk about Dr. McQuaid. It's all those things where you all impact our youngsters. And I just wanted to say to you, being involved yesterday and, and today in that rain, it was wonderful seeing these past principals, like their muscle memory and all of that, so. But I just wanted to say that this was wonderful. I had a wonderful experience. And to our teachers and administrators and support staff, keep doing what you're doing. Because it, I, it was a reminder of how you all are part of shaping our youngsters.
Well, and to that end, not to age any of us, Dr. Roggs and I, but it doesn't stop just because they're in high school or even because they're in college. Because my 31-year-old has been home for almost three weeks. And we had to relive US history and other such things through Fort Mill High School and Springfield Middle School a little bit, and it doesn't, it doesn't end, so.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment. We got, we got a, we got a new face in the room. We got Dr. Dixon.
That's right.
Over here. I, I would like to know what has been your, this lady's special, by the way. She is a special individual. This is definitely a great, great asset. I, I would like to know, Dr. Dixon, what's, what's been your biggest takeaway? What, what's, what's been your biggest takeaway since you've been here?
And I told her I wasn't gonna call on her this first meeting.
He can't control us.
Well, my first takeaway is clearly my mother paid you because you just announced that I was special. She's the person who, who absolutely believes that. I don't know about anyone else so much. But actually, Mr. Bodie asked me something similar, and my first take, takeaway is an enormous amount of gratitude. I've traveled this entire state in my role at the South Carolina Department of Education. I've visited every county and visited every school district. And I can say that we are well-resourced with great people who want to do the right thing for children here in Fort Mill School District. And I am incredibly honored just to have an opportunity to be a part of this system. So that's my first takeaway. It's still early, but it's exciting. I walk in schools every day. Principals have great energy, assistant principals love on kids, and teachers are happy to be there. And that is a win for everybody.
Love it.
And I will say, she, every day, at the end of the day, when I say bye, or she says bye, she thanks me for, for bringing her here. So she's, she's very, very grateful for this opportunity, so.
Love it. Doing a great job.
You know, the, the only thing I would add, just a, a reminder that it, it's not just about opening the new school because it's a change for the kids at the new school. We had a ton of kids that, and families that experienced change. And so the, the, the bus issues, the, we still have the middle school shuttles, all of those things. I mean, a ton of kids were going someplace, and parents were taking them to someplace that they didn't do this time last year. And so, I mean, I would say kudos to the staff for the very small volume of, of, of issues that occurred, given the number, I, I don't know how many, but probably a thousand people that were going to somewhere different, learning a new place, including principals at new places, and, you know, just all kinds of things that, that, that changed this year. So off to a roaring start. And at least we saved the monsoon for the second day instead of the first day, right?
At least no wind this year, right?
Right.
But you're right. And, and thanks to our community for, for their patience and cooperation these first few days, because it gets a little tricky. Buses can be late and car rider line can be long, but we'll get, we'll get through it and we'll figure it out. The second thing I do want to talk about before I talk about the calendar events is the, our closing the achievement gap project is underway. Tony Carey Carey started today, so he's, he's at work. And, and what he's doing, I want to make sure the public understands, is, is he is looking at Catawba Ridge first, but he is looking at all students involved in anything extracurricular. And he's gonna compare that with academic data, attendance data and be, and discipline data. And then we're gonna look at, research shows that, that students that are involved, they're happier, they do better academically, they attend school more often, and they're less discipline problems. So we're, we've got that project underway, so I just wanted to kind of give you an update on that, so. Calendar of events, we have, well, the fun part happened yesterday, which was the first day of school. But we do have a school board meeting on the 19th, or a work session. And then we all go to the law conference from the 22nd through the 24th in Charleston. And then we have a two-hour release on the 29th, which for all of you, it, elementary's at 12, middle's at 110, high school's at 140. We have some confusion on that sometimes because they compare it to the half-day, including my family thinks they get out earlier, so, which they don't. And then in September, we have Labor Day, no school on the first of September. And then we have two board meetings, the 3rd and 16th, and a two-hour early release on the 26th.
And we start our first school visits on the 16th, which is, which is not on the calendar, but I'm pretty sure that that is one that's scheduled. And we start, we changed it up a little bit this time, so they're not on a Monday anymore. They're now on a Tuesday.
All right. And then, now to enrollment update. We have, on the first day of school, we had 17,917 students attend. And that was up 288 students from the first day of 24, 25. And I want to remind you, we ended at 18,446 last year. So we were about almost 700 students more than we were on the first day. So we're gonna see these students trickle in. As of today, we saw 18,024 students attend. We have 84 in the queue for registration. So that are returning or currently completing registration. And then you're gonna see attendance continue to increase, I would say, probably through Labor Day. As schools up north, they don't get out till late and they don't start school until, usually after Labor Day, so. We've seen.
So end of the year, what do you think that number's gonna be? Just give, give me a range. Just, just, not to hold you, just, what's the range?
Yeah, he's gonna write it down.
You ready?
Yeah.
I'm gonna say 18,604.
Wow.
Is this the Price is Right?
The Price is Right.
18,605, Bob.
All right. And then last but not least, I, I wanna, I wanna get on my soapbox a second. I have all these people that say to me during the summer, they're like, where are you going? I say, I'm going to work. They're like, y'all work during the summer? And I just want to say that the amount of work that these people do, the people that do work in the summer, the, the amount of work they do is just unbelievable, from the maintenance staff, facilities, technology. I mean, it is buzzing around here. If you ever walk through these halls. Finance, I mean, our school administrators are working hard, bookkeepers. So I just want to thank them for, for all they did this summer to prepare for this school year. In a short summer, especially, I think eight weeks or whatever it was. So thank y'all, and I want to thank our team that's, that's here today, that they've worked so hard to, to prepare for this school year. And I also want to thank the seven of you. I've been living in a dream the last month. And maybe it's because I'm not getting much sleep, but I think it's honestly, this is a, this is an opportunity of a lifetime, and I could not be happier than to sit in this seat. And I will tell you, Dr. Epps has been a huge help in helping me this transition. He calls me almost every day and just checks in on me, and he's gone to some meetings with me, so I want to thank him too. So thank y'all very much.
All right. Well, sadly, we are in need of an executive session to discuss personnel recommendations and legal issues and contractual issues. And before somebody gives me a motion, it, as a, as a reminder for those watching, we are going to change our procedure a little bit, and so the channel will stay live. We will not be here. You will have a, a placeholder screen until we come back out of executive session, and then we'll open it back up to conclude any actions, which sometimes we do and sometimes we don't have very brief actions. But you're welcome to stick around and watch the screen, or if you don't watch it, it'll be recorded.
Get some popcorn.
Right. It'll be recorded later. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to go into executive session.
And we are in executive session. Thanks, all.
We are back in open session. During executive session, we discussed personnel recommendations, legal issues, and contractual issues, and I believe we have one action to take.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration for 18 replacement, five new, for a total of 23 certified staff.
Second.
They have a motion as second for 18 replacement and five new certified staff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thanks again for watching.